It's time, Commissioner Pete Myers is going to lead us in a prayer and Commissioner Williams with the pledge. Please stand.
Bow your head please. Our Heavenly Father, we would first like to thank you for the liberties that we experience in this country every day and for those individuals that have served in the military and provided that right for us. We'd also like to thank you for your continued blessings and grace as we struggle through the last phases of this COVID pandemic. Now, as we enter into the agenda, please provide us with wisdom so that we make sound decisions to the benefit of our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please place the flag.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. What is a sleepy looking crowd out there?
That little bit of rain, you know.
If we have any present or past military, law enforcement, first responders in the room, please stand and be recognized. We appreciate your service. Okay, at this time, we're going to move on to the adoption of the agenda unless there are any changes I'm not aware of, we're going to entertain a motion as it stands.
Make a motion, approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of the second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you folks. Under public information, first item is an update on the Pender County courthouse for mediation and repairs. Mr. Van.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman Brown and fellow commissioners. I'd like to ask Mike Brison with Thomas Construction, the project manager, he'll present us with the update at this time. Thank you, Mike.
Good to see everybody. Good afternoon. Thanks for your time today. So we have a brief presentation here, kind of update from where we are last month in the project. Couple notable pictures up there on the top, that is the new courtroom. The judge's bench has been put back in place, refinished, reinstalled. Curtains are also reinstalled, paint's 95% complete throughout the courtroom, so it looks like a courtroom again. And, you know, actually after I put together this presentation, we had the seats installed as well, so if anyone's been over there, it looks like a true courtroom once again.
So the seats are in?
Yes, sir. Everything on the main floor, the balcony is not installed yet. Seating in the balcony. Roofing has been completed. The tile flooring has been completed throughout the building, a little bit of punch out to do there. As you can see, I've already mentioned, the judge's bench has been reinstalled, curtains have been reinstalled. A notable milestone for us, at least internally, was we've gotten through all of our above ceiling inspections, so we're now closing in, ceiling tile and the ceilings are coming back together. So that's always a big milestone, means we're getting close to the end, as we should be. The ADA ramp out front of the main entrance has been re-poured, if anyone's seen that. The railings still have to go in, but as far as site work goes, we have started on some of the new sidewalks, putting those back, the majority have been poured, but we still have a few areas to replace. And if anyone's been by there again recently, you probably noticed all of the windscreen fencing and the job trailer and a lot of material has been hauled out of there. So once again, packing down, moving into the building, working from the top down, trying to get out of there on schedule and on time. Things are ongoing right now, as I mentioned, site cleanup and Thomas demobilization, so we have kind of packed down into just one room on the first floor there that we're operating out of now. Painting is ongoing, millwork and countertop installation, I was actually just over there, the guys are there now putting in some more of the millwork, that's like the main reception area on the first floor. We've got elevator and final inspections for the new elevator scheduled for May 11th coming up, so if all goes well, that elevator will be active after that time. Again, another big milestone there because we're relying on the state and their inspectors, so always good to get that past us.
So if you have any difficulty getting that scheduled, let us know, okay?
Okay, will do. We're scheduled right now, so if something falls through.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be quick to know, yes, sir. Flooring and carpet is ongoing, although most of that has been completed at this time. The railing for the ADA ramp that I mentioned outside, and then all of your mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems trim out and start up, that's ongoing. We'll still be working through all, a lot of that right up until the end. But basically everybody's on that final leg of the process and we are working towards a final punch out and all the little details that make it something special, so. Upcoming items, the rest of the courtroom furniture will be installed, and again, mainly that's just speaking to the balcony chairs at this time. The ADA ramp once again, final elevator inspections, ceiling tile is going in throughout, the juror's link trim out is coming up. That was a Pender County purchased item, but we're working closely with that team to make sure they get in there on time, get that commissioned before we turn over the building. And then contractor punch out and final inspection, so we're looking like we're on track, everything's looking good for our substantial completion date of May 19th, a little over two weeks away, three weeks away. And final completion June 16th as scheduled. So right, you know, the big thing for us right now is getting to that punch out point, that's the devil's in the details, and we're going to get ready to start at the top and work down through a finishing process and literally punch out rooms, close doors, lock them, nobody goes in unless we have a key and let them to do something. So that's kind of our, our method to the madness of getting out of there.
Speaking of which, I'd like to bring to your attention if whoever our manager has not already done so, is there any way you could get your crews to turn off the lights in the courthouse before they leave?
Sure, so, so some of the lights within the courtroom and the courthouse as a whole are emergency egress lights that are not switched, they're permanent on fixtures, so you're always going to have some, some lighting in hallways and corridors that stays on. That's, that's code requirements, that's the life safety requirement, there's nothing we can do about that. I have relayed that message to Patrick and our team. Internally for Thomas, we tend to go the other route, we prefer to leave lights on for security purposes, it's kind of an ounce of prevention or a pound of cure as far as vandalism goes. People are deterred not to go into the building when the lights are on, people can see what they're doing, so.
An unsecured building, yes, but they would be breaking and entering if they went into the courthouse.
Sure.
And several weeks ago, every light in that courthouse was on.
Okay.
And I mentioned it to our manager, he said it would be taken care of, and again, laughter, two weeks ago after our meeting, same thing. It just, it just makes me a little uncomfortable as to who's securing that building before they leave, and we don't want vandals in there.
Sure, understood.
And I agree with you.
Absolutely. So, so in our project superintendent, Patrick Watkins, he's responsible for closing up that site every day, and I can, I can assure you, he's locking it up. I, I will mention it to him again to make sure the lights are turned off, you know, and again, there will be some lights on, when you drive by, you're going to see some lights on in the hallways, that's just part of the design.
Was it working at night in there sometimes?
Uh, no, not really at night, it's just the egress lighting, and undoubtedly, I'm sure somewhere along the way has failed to turn off a light switch, it happens, you know.
Will you let us know if the juror's link contractor starts holding things up on your end?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. From a billing standpoint, and this was actually submitted before the April billing was turned in, so really, the, the key metrics are down there at the bottom. Anticipated April billing was 336, which brought us to a 98% completion. This slide was as of March 21st, so the dates above and the values above are really reflective of the March billing. We put about 7% in place over the course of the last month. Any questions there? I think that's all we've got, so again, I'm sure we'll be talking about a punch out and an architect walkthrough soon. It's always an exciting time, so we look forward to having it.
All right.
Thank you for a good report.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next, I guess Dr. Hill's out there, there he is. Come on up, Dr. Hill, we've got a 2021 NCDPI facility needs survey presentation.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is something we have to do technically every five years for the North Carolina Department of Instruction, Public Instruction. And, uh, Mr. LaFon, I'm going to come explain this, this is your project, and introduce Mr. LaRoe. Kind of get the people who are really doing the work to talk sometime.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, there's a, it's a five and 10-year facilities need survey that the state requires to be done by every LEA in the, in the, in the state. And for us, we contracted Mr. Andrew LaRoe with, basically, his company specializes in doing these facilities assessments for, for this year, and he's here to present his findings to you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We, well, a little bit very quickly, I am Andy LaRoe, I own a company called Baska. I'm retired chief operations officer from Guilford County Schools, and started a consulting company and, and we help school districts across the state with their long-range facilities planning and, and a lot of other things that, that seem to keep coming up. This year, we do this every five years, we have a team put together of, of facility administrators that go in to the school districts and work on an interview basis to gather data about the needs of the facility. It's a good point for me to say maybe one or two different times here that this is a facility needs survey by the state. What you'll, the numbers that you're seeing, it's not a budget, it's not a budget to be approved, and it's not a project plan. It's simply walking through in a conference room on a table exercise, going through every single building from top to bottom and asking questions about systems that need to be replaced or will soon need to be replaced. You have a copy of an executive summary. We essentially collect all of the data that is required by the state, and we issue two, two notebooks to the district. One is the actual state forms, it's everything that's been printed out and submitted to the state. The due date for that was January the 8th of this year. We submitted the data for Pender in early December, so everything was submitted on time. And I'll speak in a moment about an addendum that we did that we updated the data that we have. We prepare a workbook for the district that's a little more organized in terms of something that they can use at their desk for, for facility planning. It's got a lot of information for each school and the cost and the priority of building systems that need to be replaced, and a lot of other information. Looking at that first page of the executive summary, just a little bit in it about, about these notebooks, there's a table on that first page. We always think it's kind of interesting just to look back and see what was submitted on this survey by the district back to the 2020, 2001 survey. And you can see for reasons that we're not able to explain, and probably don't need to be explained at this point, but there was not a, a survey submitted last, the last five-year cycle in the 2015-16 school year. You'll see the numbers associated with.
Just a second. Am I the only one not able to access the attachment for this presentation?
There, there wasn't one, I never did receive.
It was emailed.
It was emailed, sir. Charlie Chad emailed it again late last week because I missed it the first time, so, yeah, it's not, it's.
I'll be, I'll be a little more detailed.
I, I just didn't want you to assume that we were be able to see real time.
I was assuming that you have one in front of you.
Yeah.
For, for time expense, I'll keep on going because I know y'all have a lot on your agenda. So, so now knowing that you, you don't have it right in front of you, I'll read down. The state has five different categories of, of facility needs that, that we report up to them. They ask for years zero through five, it's a five-year window, but they also ask for years six through 10. The part that I'm showing here right now is the first five years, and that's the part that goes to the State Board of Education and also gets published in a, a report that goes to the legislature. And the legislature uses this data, hopefully for a, a capital facilities bond. It happened once in the 20 years that we've been, or 30, almost 30 years that we've been doing this. We'll see this year, there's a lot of, a lot of talk about a, a capital bond.
So let me ask you a question, what's the consequence for there not having been done this type of survey in 2015, 2016?
There, there's not a consequence that I know of. I work very closely with Department of Public Instruction and school planning. Probably the, what I typically tell school districts is the biggest consequence is it is a blank line in the state report that went to the legislatures, and it was about how much money we need in our district for our schools. So I've always said to school, school district staffs that it would be a really good idea to make sure that you, it's an important job, it needs to be done. But I don't know of any, it's a general statute that I don't believe I've ever heard of anybody having any kind of a penalty for.
Thank you.
Good question, though. So, and, and the, the categories are new facilities, and this is years zero through five, and we'll talk more about it in a moment, but there's new facilities, there's one new pre-K eight school for $53,179,000. There are additions in this, one is a 10, 10-classroom addition, since I brought it up, I'll have to be able to say it, at Top Cell Middle. And then there are other additions into six through 10. There's renovations is typically the largest. We, we add, we really get with all of the maintenance department, with technology, with child nutrition, transportation, your athletic director, we go through every. transportation, your athletic director, we go through every school, and we, we come up with what's the, 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 the amount of renovations that need to be done, uh, for the zero through five school years, it was at twenty million dollars. And furniture equipment is five point five million, and that includes, uh, furniture for a new elementary school, plus other furniture that's needed in the district, and there's a land purchase of one point eight million, uh, for the land for the new school, so there's a total of, um, eighty-three million, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars for the years zero through, zero through five. As I said, we also collect data for years six through ten, that part's not shown in this graph, but it's an additional one hundred and fifty-four million, bringing the total up to two hundred and thirty-six million for all of the instructional facilities, new additions, construction and renovations, furniture and land. Also, the state does not ask for non-instructional facilities, um, but we feel like, um, I guess as facility administrators, if I'm gonna go to this much trouble to find out what needs to be done in the district, I'm gonna look at the maintenance office, the central office, transportation, and all of those buildings as well, so it brings a total, uh, with that, came up to fifteen million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, and bringing a, a total for the entire project up to two hundred and fifty-one million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and, once again, it's, it's not a budget, it's a facility needs survey, so it's a, it's a good time to have a high number and be able to get a good detailed look at what, what's out there. I have some, some information in, in this about our methodology. I've already mentioned that we basically collect data from the district on past studies, on any information you have with enrollment, with capacity, and we, and certainly with your, your renovations, we compile it, and we put that data into the state forms, we typically are here doing interviews for the better part of a week, um, which we did back in November and December. One of the things that, uh, we do is send out a floor plan to every principal, and the principals identify how they use each room.
Could I, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You conduct a lot of interviews, are you looking at wish lists, or are you looking at real needs?
Real needs.
Because those are some big figures you're talking about there, and when you're pricing real estate, that one point eight million or whatever for land, where do you draw those figures from?
We, we typically, uh, start with, you know, a, a general average that we have, and then we work with the district, and in this district, we.
Where do you, that you have, but where do you come up with those figures?
On the, on the cost for land, or on the cost for renovations?
Can I add that, add to your question? There's a big difference if you're talking about buying land in one part of this county or another, so I'm assuming I know where you're talking about this next five-year study.
On, on the eastern side of the county, we set it at sixty thousand dollars an acre, and on the, and in the central part of the county, it was set at forty thousand dollars an acre, and that was through conversations with your staff.
All right. Now, are you seeing this zero to five years, you're talking one school?
Zero to five years for all of the instructional facilities, or you say one school, one school to be constructed?
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's what, that's what it sounded like you were saying, one school.
There's one school in zero to five, and there's two schools in six to ten.
So all these renovations that took place back with this recent bond that we just implemented, so those were not all the renovations that needed to happen?
I can't, I can't answer, cause I don't know all the ones that you did in this recent bond referendum, but I know that there, there is considerable amount of renovations, needs in the district, and let me, let me s- explain again, our process is basically, we've got, we've got your head of your electrical department and your technology department sitting in a room with us, and we're going to each school, and we're saying, how about the fire alarm system, what kind of shape is it in, oh, it's gonna need to be replaced in ten years, okay, what about, do you need an electrical upgrade because you've been adding more computers to the school, and by that, that questioning, we're able to, uh, determine what the needs are at each school, and we also ask them for a priority, should that be done in years one through two, three through five, or six through ten, and we also, uh, have some price per square feet that we can apply to getting a very general price for it. So, does that help? I overanswered your question.
I hear you, you go ahead.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that the state asks for is, um, to take a look at your last ten years of ADM, average daily membership in the schools, and where your, where your trend is running, are you gaining or losing students in the last ten years, and then the state gives us a projection for the next ten years based off of, of, uh, very basic formula that they have for predicting how many students will be in the schools. Um, sorry that you don't have one right in front of you, but I will say that the, the, the chart that, that we have in that report basically says that in the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven school year, your enrollment was eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five students. In the twenty-twenty, the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, you were at nine thousand, four hundred and forty-four, a- and they're looking ahead, ten years from now, to twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-thirty school year, you would be at fourteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four students, so you have a rapidly growing population unlike most of the, the counties that, we work with twenty-two school systems in North Carolina, and most of the eastern North Carolina school districts are on a rapid decline, so it was a, an, an interesting thing for us, but it's notable that we see where you're located,
Yes, you, you talk, you're north, northeast of here, north of here.
Yes, well, ours is basically for the, for the entire school district. I was mentioning a moment ago that we asked the principals that, to tell us what each classroom is used for, and we use a formula that's given to us by the state to determine capacity at each school, so the total capacity for your school district right now is ten thousand, six hundred and ten, so with a, you know, with, with, with your current enrollment in the, close to ten thousand, and your ten thousand, six hundred seats district-wide, you're, you're at a point where you are gonna have to build new schools, or you are gonna have to start finding additional capacity. One of the things that we look at is the age of your school district, um, we've, we, we look at the, the oldest school to the newest school, we rank them, uh, the oldest one here, by our records, being Burgal Middle School, built in, in nineteen seventeen?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, um, and then, of course, the newest being Surf City Middle, um, in twenty, built in twenty eighteen, average age of your schools is thirty-five, we, a lot of times look at a design life for a, a built school, somewhere in the area of seventy years, so you would have a pretty medium level of age on your school district.
Let me ask you a question here.
Yes.
Burgal Middle, it was originally built in, are there, any of those structures still standing?
Yes.
Other than that, the one over to the side, I mean, the main body itself, the main school itself, is, is that school that old?
But, but.
I can, I can answer that a little bit.
But there was a fire that.
That's what I'm saying, I thought.
Burgal.
Old high school.
They, it burned the original structure.
The largest square footage of the school was built in nineteen fifty-one.
That's what I'm thinking, so, when you say nineteen seventeen, you're talking about the original structure that, most of which is not there anymore, there is a building over to the side that has some age to it, that I think they used for a music class or something over the years, but the body of the school, that's kinda misleading, you say that school is built in nineteen seventeen.
So we have a, we have two charts that we, we try to reconcile that by saying, we, we know that sometimes a school district will build a practically new school and leave the front porch of the old one, or, you know, so.
Yeah, but you can't call the whole school that old.
Yes, sir, and so we basically do another ranking that says Burgal Middle would be, would be still the oldest school built in nineteen fifty-one.
I won't argue that point, you know.
And, and then we would also, West Pender Middle, um, would, would have gone from nineteen fifty-eight to nineteen ninety-three with major construction.
But to tell folks that was Burgal Middle was built in nineteen seventeen, kinda gives them the impression we're using a structure from nineteen seventeen.
And Burgal Middle was expanded substantially with the last bond, that front building was added, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I agree, I, we, we try to handle that with the way we present.
Well, I just don't wanna hear things that's misleading, you know, I'd rather hear facts, so I just hope you'll keep that in mind while you're talking to us about this.
I will.
Okay.
So, and did they get copies at this point? Okay, so I'm, I'm on, I'm on page fi- five, uh, there's a pie chart on there, and this is all of the renovations for years zero through ten, we wanted to, to kinda get a, a picture of, of where is this, where is this forty-eight million thou- forty-eight million, three hundred and one thousand going to, by the pie chart, you can see that over, over half of that is going into plumbing, HVAC, and electrical, uh, at, at twenty-five million, and then we give you a breakdown, um, per category, so that you can look within that HVAC.
Why is that so much in light of the fact we're only building one building, why is the HVAC system for a ten-year program twenty-five million dollars?
I think first of all that, um, it's typically, we see HVAC being the largest cut of the pie in a district, and the reason here that it would be so is that even, you know, you have a, a constant stream of high-dollar items that have to be budgeted for a, a, ahead of time, so inside of this, inside of this, uh, document, we'll see, um, replacing chillers at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a piece, replace some boilers at a hundred and fifty thousand a piece, it's, it's a very, probably the most expensive of that and roofing for a school district to be able to keep their renovation funds.
I'm talking about the HVAC system, not roof, just replacement of main systems, is that what you're considering for existing buildings and one new building, twenty-five million dollars over ten years?
No, ma'am, twenty-five million over.
That's my question, sir, what, what, what are you considering in twenty-five million dollars of HVAC, plumbing, and electrical work over the next ten years?
Over the next ten years, and, uh, from our interviews with your staff, when we went to each one of those schools and asked the question, where are we at with that particular system, and they would advise us that maybe it's a, a two-pipe system that's needing to be converted to a four-pipe system because of particular issues at that school, or they need to replace major components, and we're looking out ten years, so even though something may have been replaced recently, some items in HVAC world have a shorter design life.
Well, I like, I like to boil it down, so how many buildings total does the school system have now, it's a lot.
How many buildings does it?
Yeah, so, so however many buildings you're talking about, you're talking about spending a little over two million dollars a year, and you divide that by all the buildings that the school system has, and when you start talking about the HVAC for all those old buildings, the time you add it up, it's not a whole lot per building for you.
Two and a half million dollars a year.
Yeah, over, spread out over all the buildings that they have, now, if we go, if the, 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 the number you're talking about for that new school has HVAC in that new school in that number.
But, but aren't those systems under warranty, isn't there some kind of warranty under those systems for replacement?
Yes, ma'am.
To offset some of this cost, why does it come out, right out of pocket?
Typically, typically, we can exercise those warranties on any defective installations or defective products within a, a short timeframe, but when we put a, a, a major HVAC equipment in a commercial building like a school, it's intended to be running for fifteen-plus years, and in many cases, I, I would have to defer to Mr. LaFon, but I know that you'll have a lot of equipment out there that they've been maintaining well, and is, is, is running much longer than fifteen years, but we have to project ahead for replacements. And by the way, that's a great time to say it, we had to talk to every one of your maintenance people, and they were experts on the, on the systems that they work on, and they knew what they were talking about, and they knew what to tell us to put in here, we were very impressed with your maintenance department, and we wanna tip our hat to them.
But it's, you know, it's worst-case planning, I think it's fair to say that, that for good reason, you talk about preventive maintenance and stuff like that, you get more out of them than what they're designed for, but you got a plan for what they're designed for, just like we heard the famous, uh, roofing presentation for schools, the famous, or the infamous Union County lawsuit, and they based it all based on roofs, and the, everybody's favorite attorney blew that number out of just what you could spend in roofs, we all know that you get a lot more out of roofs than, than what made that man rich, so.
Yeah, but when, when we're talking those kinds of numbers, I want to make sure that the people and our citizens are hearing this, and they're keeping it in perspective, and I want to be able to keep it in perspective, two hundred million dollars is a lot of money for me. And it's a lot of money for Pender County.
I will say that, just from my experience of working with a lot of different school districts, it's a level of funding that's required for the, for the ongoing upkeep of a, of a school building, and we worked with some districts this year that I won't need to name, but they, they, they haven't had the funding, they've been putting it off, their average age of their schools is close to seventy, and they're, everything is so far gone at this point that it's hard to decide where to start, and, um, I, I'm gonna, I, I appreciate the, the discussion, on behalf of the answer of questions, I do wanna just kinda finish up with, with this particular document, you can see a breakdown of prices on the, on the other building systems, you, we, we mentioned roofing, uh, actually, this district at two point five million for the number of schools that you have, and for the other costs that you have in there, you've, you're in good shape, it, it appears to us on, on your roofing. The last page of this, page seven, is basically just outlining what, uh, the cost of these, the new schools are, the three new schools, one of them is years oh to five, a, a new East K-eight school, uh, the total on that is fifty-seven point five million. When we made our, uh, presentation to the Board of Education, there was a discussion about, we didn't have land in that equation, uh, there was discussion about that we, we probably needed to add land, so that number now can be bumped, uh, for thirty acres, it's sixty thousand an acre to, to an additional one point eight million for land. The, in years six through ten, the new high school, um, also, we, we made an adjustment in the cost for that land, so it's fifty acres, it's at sixty thousand an acre for three million dollars, and then the new Central, um, K-eight, and by the way, that, i- if you, well, they don't have a handout on the construction, but there was a, there was a typo in that in terms of the number of acres, um, the, the new Central K-eight is thirty acres, um, at forty thousand dollars an acre, at one point two million, and so I mentioned also that, um, uh, there, there is, in the non-instructional facilities, there is thirteen point six million in for a system administration office building, warehouse, receiving, and a bus garage, and we used an architect to come up with a very basic, uh, cost estimate of what those needs would be on, based on square footage and, and use, so that's a total of thirteen point six. And beyond that, um, I would be happy to answer any questions, I, I do wanna say one thing about when you're, when you're growing as fast as you are, and you're looking at the capacity of the schools you have now, and you're looking at your projected enrollments, I think the state system does a great job of raising a red flag that says, hey, you're, you're catching up with yourself in terms of capacity, but this district, and I think, I think that you're taking steps to do that already, needs a more defined answer on your enrollment projections, and really get a handle on exactly where are we gonna be ten years from now, uh, and where do, exactly do we need to place these schools? Can I answer any questions you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Lara.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any sign-ups for public comment?
Uh, we have one sign-up, Ms. Chairman, uh, Mayor Newkirk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is kinda dated in here, isn't it? Good evening, everyone, how we doing?
All right.
Did everyone have this shot? That's great.
I have my shot.
That's good, fantastic. Uh, I believe, Commissioners, you have your, that, uh, that. Uh, I believe the person is, you have your, that, uh, handout I handed to you there. And what it is about is, uh, the building is, uh, community, uh, one of the citizens in the community wanna purchase the building. And I believe we went over before with y'all, and we came back with, uh, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars for the building.
And you're talking about the old drugstore building in Adkison?
Yes, it's on that handout I gave to you there. And what we're looking at is eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, that's, that's, that's kinda heat for that building there. And right now, I believe y'all, the, the, the county have what, the eighty percent of it? And, uh, the town have twenty percent of it?
Ownership's gonna be based on, Travis, Chris Monroe, ownership's gonna be based on the portion of taxes owed by each, each, the county as well as-
Owed to each entity.
Right, right. So if there's, if there's eight hun- if taxes owed are eight hundred, or a thousand dollars, and eight hundred is- To Pender and tw- uh, two hundreds to Atkinson, that would be the amount that-
Right, and, and to try to help our towns, we've also done that on splitting the attorney's fees on that percentage. Um, even though, you know, the lawyer's doing the same amount of work. But, again, for, they're doing it for both parties, but we split what the legal fees and costs are based on the amount of taxes owed. That has been the, the practice in the county, just to, just as a way to try to help them out a little bit on, on some of that.
Okay, so Mr. Newkirk, what are you here today for?
I would like for y'all to go over this, what I hand out to you. And then I'll come back later on, and then y'all can see what y'all can do to help the citizens buy the property, dealing with the taxes.
I think they came to this, came to us about this one time before, right?
Yes.
And the county, uh, turned down their offer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, they wanted, for a very small amount of money.
I think, I think what he offered was a dollar.
What, what were the taxes on that property? You remember?
Taxes owed or the tax value?
No, the taxes owed on the property.
I don't remember seeing that number. I think it was to the point where we were, we were countering with the minimum tax value, which I'm trying to pull it up now. Which is a common phrase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I thought that would have been done by now, we discussed this, what, two weeks ago?
The ball's in their court.
Yeah.
The ball's in their court.
We were, we were asking for the tax value on the-
Yeah, well, see, that's what I'm saying. You, there, the tax value on this, what, eighteen to twenty, twenty-five dollars?
The, the land value's twenty-eight hundred dollars, the building value's sixteen thousand and fifty-five dollars for a total value of eighteen thousand eight fifty-five. The sale price, um, was twenty thousand dollars in, um, November of twenty nineteen. So sale price, if, if we owned it, that means that it did not meet the minimum, and maybe the sale price was the actual amount owed on the taxes, I guess?
I talked to the individual, he called me several times, this guy, he told me to buy it, I mean, I mean, there's no way we're gonna just give it away. I mean, I mean, it's gonna take a lot of money to fix it.
Well, that's the worksheet right there. I mean, yeah, it's gonna take a lot of money for it, because the guy's offering to put the money out to fix it. I mean, he give, give right there on the paperwork, how much money it's gonna cost him. Not cost the town, it's gonna cost him.
But Mr. Newkirk, we also have an obligation to the taxpayers of the county, or, or to the town too, which is, we've got to get some kind of value out of this building, to, if we're gonna sell it to someone, he's asking us to basically give him the building.
No, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir. That's why I have me that, for y'all to come up something better.
So he's made another offer, is that what you're saying?
No, sir, we're waiting for y'all to make the offer.
We're not making, we don't make offers.
The ball's in the court of them, making off.
They make the offer.
We turned down their offer, that's, I mean, we have to-
Skip, skip, sir. Did you, did you have it up for auction at one time?
No, sir.
Never had it up for auction.
The original, the original.
Yes, and, and if we owned it, that meant that nobody put a bid in for the minimum amount of the taxes owed.
Now the taxes done went up. From what it was at that time.
Uh, and since nineteen, no, the taxes wouldn't have gone up since then.
So at that time, it was at eighteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it said sale price, which means what we got, what we wound up having it for was nineteen, so that must've been about what it was. But the county doesn't go out looking to get land that way, it just happens that way. We're trying to get rid of other properties that the county has, and we have to, we have to, we s- sell it for a fair market value. We can't just sell it, well, we liked it, and they're gonna put this much in here, and then everybody said, well, you sold it to them for that, now you gotta do that. It's kinda a slippery slope, Mr. Mayor.
Well, well, we look at it this way, then. You can't work it out that way, why would we just let it sit there for another fifty, thirty years, then what? Cause that's what's gonna happen.
Mr. Newkirk, there's no sense in going down that path. All we're seeing is, no, all we're seeing is, is they've got to make a legitimate and, and a, and a serious offer, to, to sell it for a dollar.
Well, now you, no, 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 I, I told him the same thing, that's a big, a dollar, no.
Yeah, they oughta, but they oughta be making the offer. I appreciate you're trying to help your town, I appreciate your position that you're in, but, you know, they need to make a serious offer. I mean, you know, it, it's kinda puts you in awkward position, not awkward, but, you know.
I, I'll talk to him, come up to him a little bit about the offer, what he did. Because I, I want, I want this to happen.
Well, I understand that, and-
It's, it's a great idea, and we appreciate what you're trying to do and trying to facilitate for the community. That would be a beautiful building fixed up, and a point of pride, but just, um, question, do you have any idea what this guy's gonna do with the building when he fixes it up?
Well, that's another road.
That's what?
That's another road.
Another road?
Yeah. Well, I, I'll just-
But it's, but my point is, is this going to be for a personal business, or?
No, it's gonna be for the town.
For the town.
It's gonna be for the town. See, his wife is, well, another thing, his wife, where they're living at now, his wife don't like the way it look. Plus, she, she, her grandmother live there. Now, see, what you wanna say, this, his wife, what she wants, she get, so, you know, and-
Did you, did you have any success contacting the historic society?
Yes, that's, that's on that, that, that piece I just gave you.
You know, Adkison Fire Department raises a great deal of money for, um, their fire department, so I know that, that-
I'd be glad when I can start raising some for the town. But I'd be glad-
But, but what I'm saying is, are, are you, since it's going to be for the town, are y'all a- any at all inclined to, to do it as a civic project?
Would that be better?
Well, I don't know. But I, it galls me to think that we've got to negotiate the sale of a piece of property, a piece of historic property to a private individual for a nominal sum, when my preference is and always will be to maintain our old buildings of historical value for the benefit of the communities that they serve.
Yeah, I told him it's up to him to make another offer. It's the Murphy family, I know the Murphy family in Adkison goes way back, generations, and, uh, that's, um, Billy Murphy's daughter.
Right.
And said they're gonna move back here eventually.
Right, well, they already back, he's just going back for, but, but-
Okay, well, just talk to them again, as if they wanna make another offer.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right?
I'll do that. And I got one, one more other thing. You, you see my shirt here? See this little, yeah? Could you read it out to them right now?
Yes, sir, Pender Sheriff's, so, Pender Sheriff's Office, County of Pender Citizens Academy.
Did everyone know we had that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's pretty new.
We did.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, I would, I would love it and like it, and I know the sheriff would too. If we could just have one of y'all to go through it, just, just one of them.
I'll go.
It starts on eleventh of May, and I'm quite sure the sheriff will, he, she, and, and when she get back from it, let her come in here with her shirt on, I tell you.
All right.
I'm proud of my sheriff, I'm proud of my sheriff department, he was doing way, um, out there, way out west, have they come?
Where the buffalo run?
Yeah, I'm still proud of my sheriff department, because when I went through his class, he found out how they work, and how they're maneuvering. That man right there, he does a good job, he does a great job.
Thank you.
She will thank you when she get back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Newkirk, appreciate you coming.
That was our only timeout, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to the consent agenda then, if everyone's had a chance to take a look at it. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Under approvals and resolution, first item being consideration of the sale of surplus property, we tabled this from the meeting on April the nineteenth. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, this is to refresh your memory, um, I have some handouts. This is one fifty-six Sine, if I'm saying that right.
Sine or something like that, wasn't it?
Drive off of US four twenty-one, piece of property that, that we've owned through tax foreclosure. The, uh, the issue was tabled. Pass these down, just kinda give you some pictures of the current conditions and, and aerial as well. I think the, the, the concern was, um, whether or not the property at its current tax value with the structure on it of forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars, if, um, a, a bid of sixteen-five was appropriate. And that's true, that, that bid put in was the land value only. So we asked, um, at the board's instructions, we asked, uh, Scott Henry to go out, check the property out, check the, uh, structural integrity of the, I guess that's a mobile home that appear-
Is this all the handouts you had, of course?
Two.
Two of them.
Oh, sorry.
It looks like a mobile home, maybe a double Y, I can't really tell. And, uh, Scott went on, went on the property, checked it out, said that the, the floor system as well as the roof system is compromised. And a specific question to him was, is there any value to the structure? And he said, no, salvage value only, meaning the metal. So, again, the recommendation is there's, there's no value to the, to the property in terms of the existing structure. You can see there's a couple abandoned vehicles and other trash and refuse to own the property that will need to be cleaned up. So the recommendation is to, um, move forward with the, uh, sale of the property for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
And they're responsible for cleaning it up?
They're responsible for everything, all survey, title work, lawyer work, cleaning up, we-
How many acres?
It is-
Five, is that one five?
Zero acres, it's, it's gotta be less than, than one acre.
Oh, it's the other one that's five.
Yeah, it's the other one, it's five.
Well, the value on that property is in the land, not the house at all, I'm sure. And that's our location.
Do we have any pictures of the interior of the house?
No, ma'am, it was lo- it's locked up.
And who was it said that it had no value?
Scott Henry, our, our chief building inspector.
You could see all that in the outside.
Yeah, he said you can, can't really tell everything, but this, the, um, ceiling system and van boards have been compromised on, on the, um, structures.
Well, we just needed to verify that, to make sure we weren't, uh, uh, it just seemed kinda undervalued, you know?
Right.
The offer just seemed lower. If the dwelling has no value to it, then they're gonna have to pay the cost of removing it.
That's correct.
So let me ask this question before we, um, move forward. With that statement from Scott Henry, would we not, um, issue a inspection or building permit for that if somebody wanted to go in and, and renovate that facility?
If, if they could bring it back to code, whether that's cost prohibitive or not, that would, that would be on them. You know, if it's, if it's worth salvage value in terms of what our, our building inspector says. But somebody wants to put way more than it's worth in it, that would be their prerogative. People do that all the time with, with old historic structures from sentimental standpoint. I don't think this falls in either category, but, um, somebody who's doing it for themselves, like this gentleman may be doing, um, may be able to justify doing that.
Well, at, at this point, to dovetail on your conversation, then it's, should be condemned to live in, it sounds like.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I don't believe, we, if somebody wanted to go in there and put a new roof on it and put a new floor system in it, would they even have to get a building permit for that?
They definitely should if it's structural.
Yeah, but would they?
We, we can, we can, I tell you, we can, we can, we can put special attention on this one to make sure that that-
See, we may be selling somebody that has the intention of going in there and, and renting it. And put enough money into it to-
Well, Scott's been on the property, Scott's familiar with the property, and we can make sure that there's special attention provided to, to this.
You're exactly right, if we value it at zero, we should condemn it.
I mean, if, you know, if it's that bad, then it needs to be fenced at the bend. Like I said, unless somebody sent them out of their taxes.
Can we sell it with condemnation on the, um, building?
Instead of deed restriction, could we not, that, that has to be demoed as part of the sale? And the, the proposed buyer has said they have no intentions of fixing it up, which, that doesn't guarantee-
Once it was not in our possession, then we could look at it as there being a code issue out there. We would, we didn't somehow manage to do that when we owned it, but, uh, if somebody else does, um, that would, that would be something we-
Tavaya, that's true.
Well, but, you know, but in fairness to them, we need to disclose in advance of what our, what our expectations are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, if we, if, what my point is, if we're val- if, if we're valuing the building at zero, then it truly needs to be zero, and, you know, the expectation would be that you, you, you wouldn't go in there and, and ha- and, and ha- inhabit that house. Right?
There's a lot of people out there looking for, you know-
Anything.
Anything, and to have somebody being able to rent out someplace that was unsafe, would, you know-
Not be a good thing for us.
I mean, that could potentially come back to us.
Well-
Do we have, how much was it, uh, uh, taxes owed on this property?
Uh, I don't know that, we've owned it for some period of time, um-
There's a sale by year.
Sell, sell price was seventy-five hundred, we've owned it since.
Well, that's okay, I'll get your assistant over here to-
Well, the land value, well, the, 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 the offer is more than twice what the sale value was at the time that it came into possession in Pender County anyway. It doesn't have a sale date on it, but-
Well, you know, I, I know where we're going with this, and I, I, but at the same time, if he buys the property and he chooses to go in there and rebuild the home-
And the code inspector comes out and finds it appropriate that he did that, so-
It's his home.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't see fit to condemn it when we owned it, and we offered it for sale uncondemned, and I don't think, in fairness, that we could have that right to, uh-
But it sounds like he would have a hard time getting the, um, inspections department to a-
He may not get it inspected.
Yeah.
He says he's gonna tear it down, but, you know, he wants-
We need to make sure that happens.
He wants to buy it for sixteen thousand, I say, let's sell it to him for sixteen thousand, with the understanding that anything he does on his property, I, 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 cause I'm kinda concerned that that's where he's going with that.
We can make sure that he understands that it, that our chief building inspector knows the property and knows if it passes his hands, that when he's in the neighborhood, he's gonna ride by, and if somebody's in there, since he knows the condition prior to the sale, that it's gonna be watched. And if somebody moves in there without permits and work being done, then we're gonna take corrective action through code enforcement on it. It's point three-six acres.
Well, you know, what, we have to presume the best of Scott, you know, but we're sitting here presuming the worst, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity to sell this property.
Been sitting up here long enough, though, where, I guess maybe I'm jaded, maybe that's why, one of the things that led me to my decision not to run for office again, but I've been doing this long enough, I don't give too many people benefit of the doubt anymore, that's not too Christian-like, but we don't always get the full story sitting up here. And so I, I'm, I'm playing deep acts every day.
That's why we have to ask the questions.
I don't like what that made, it makes me feel, but I'm just saying, I've been doing this long enough, that-
Well, you've been doing it long enough, you have to ask the questions.
You gotta ask, how many people will tell us anything?
All right, if everybody's ready, we'll put that to a motion.
Move, approve.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Vote's four to one. All right?
Ms. Chairman, I may have missed something. Did we adopt, approve the consent agenda?
I oppose.
Okay.
I, I did, I was, I was reading my stuff.
You were sleeping while that, what's going on?
It was very quick. That's why you missed it.
I missed it too.
No, and I did double check with Jersey over here.
So both of you were asleep, is that what you're saying?
We're gonna dock y'all's pay for that.
Okay, next item, eight point two, approved purchase order for emergency bypass pump. Mr. Keel.
Hello. All right, so in our current budget for Rocky Point Toppsville District, we had a line item to purchase the, a bypass pump. And the information's there in front of you. We had three quotes, or three or four, four quotes, actually. And the best quote came out for Xylem de-watering solutions. Purpose of this pump is to, for when we need to bypass a sewage pump station for whether there's a failure or repairs needed, that we'd have the equipment on hand to be able to do that. And also, when we have water line breaks and we have a excavation that's full of water, that we can pump that water out to be able to repair the pipe. And I did wanna mention also that I have James Proctor here, our water and sewer superintendent, who would be the primary, his division would be the primary user of this equipment. And he's here also in case there's any questions I can't answer.
I like the direction that you guys have been taking to be more resourceful on your own, in an apartment. I mean, there comes a point, yeah, when you need to get outside help also, but, you know, the case in point, the water, water was out for what, the other day in that water area for seven minutes? You know, that was pretty impressive, but I like the direction you guys are taking. I think this is a good idea.
All right. You have any other questions for Mr. Keel on this? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Keel.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Penderly Gym and Auditorium Roof Coatings.
Good afternoon.
How you doing?
Good. We're requesting an APO to put a new coating.
Who are you?
I'm Ben Valdez. I'm Assistant Director of Facilities and Fleet. Alan's assistant.
Oh, okay. Did you introduce him to us the other day?
He has been introduced to you in the past, but it's been a little while.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I thought you represented the outside vendor. I am so sorry.
So we're requesting...
So how long have you been working with us?
Nine months, I believe.
But this is his first presentation with an agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, good to have you aboard.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Van. That makes me feel a lot better.
So we're requesting APO for a new roof coating for the Penderly Gym and Auditorium. We have three bids, and the winner was D.L. Jordan. We're gonna coat both buildings, and it should be good for five years or seven, give or take. But we're hoping to have this in rotation at least every five years, where we have some company come in and do a coating on.
And D.L. Jordan is a local business?
Yep.
We also determined that they were the ones that historically, most of the time, over the years, when the school system had the buildings in their possession, they were the ones doing the work on the roofs as well. So they're...
And I've had them do work on my home, and I was well pleased with them.
All right. My wife and I had the opportunity to be over there, actually, on Friday afternoon. We'd ride the country and show it to the campus, and of course, she didn't wanna hear about my glory days playing that old gin around the old baseball field, but, you know, we went over there.
It must have been a treat.
It's really gonna be a good miss, you know, what's going on.
That new baseball field is actually lovely. It is gorgeous.
The whole place looks good. It'll get used a lot.
Yes, it will. I'll make a motion that we approve this request.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Van. Next item, consideration of selecting the contents term for moving courthouse staff into the courthouse and Biberstein Annex.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So we did get bids from four different moving companies, one of which decided they did not wanna participate after seeing how massive the move was. And it is very massive and complex, of course. We took into consideration, though, we didn't go with the absolute lowest bidder for this move simply because in conversations with the lower, the lowest bidders, they explained to me that they had, they've done commercial moves, but they had never done a commercial move of this magnitude. The contents team is familiar with the move. They have done it in the past. I spoke to our insurance provider, and of course, we had this quoted in two different ways. One was for moving the furniture only, one was for the file move, and we were hoping that the AOC would take care of the file move since the files are state property. So again, the contents team is very, very familiar with the move because they were the ones that handled this as far as moving them out of the courthouse. And so we feel that they are the responsible bidder. The insurance company agrees with that. And again, the insurance company is willing to reimburse us for the full amount of the move for Pender County. Of course, we would have to, you know, go ahead and pay...
But that's about fifty percent total, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so the other portion, so that portion is thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. The other portion for the files is thirty-six, five, thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents. And that is the portion that we have recently determined from the AOC, that they are not willing to cover that expense for us. And Trey and myself have had conversations with them along with our insurance adjuster, and they made that very clear, that that's their position. And of course, we don't want to, I'm sorry.
Mr. Van, let me interrupt you. Did I understand you to say that our insurance carrier said that they would cover this expense?
They will cover the furniture move only, which is roughly half of the expense. So the other portion that we were hoping AOC would cover, they will not cover that expense because they view those files as state-owned files, and that it shouldn't be our insurance provider's responsibility.
Have you had interaction on that?
Yes, Ms. Newton, and I had sent the board an email late last week. We got a response from them, and they have had a history of not paying these, and they sent us a list of the other counties that just paid for them. I disagree respectfully with their position, but...
We don't have any recourse, right? We have no recourse.
To me, the time is more important than anybody else.
So we need to go ahead and approve this and move on. Let's go.
We tried to challenge it. We lost.
But the insurance reimbursement was unexpected and a nice surprise. So even if AOC had kicked in, we were prepared to pay at least that much. So we're, we're good.
Moving these files, moving these files, you just don't give to anybody because of sensitivity and the weights and things, you know. We just gotta get it done and get everybody back where it's supposed to be. I mean, I don't like it. I don't like that what, you know, they will pay, but you gotta pick your battles.
Right, and it's kind of in the sweet spot of, it's enough to not like, but is it enough? I mean, we could try to bring a declarative judgment action or something, but we get, and we make an enemy in Raleigh for, and we're gonna be...
But I do think we should do this. I think we should respond to their response and indicate where we differ in their opinions. So that's on and documented in a response to their response and acknowledges that we aren't totally pleased with their position, and here's why we're not pleased.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
I think it's worth that effort to do that.
But also, I'd like...
I mean, don't you think so?
I'd like a clear statement of liability or consequence for possession of those files by a contractor that we hire. So if some of those files go missing or are damaged, and we are, we are hiring and paying for the contractor, does that put us fully at risk should something happen? Or can AOC assume supervision of the transport of their property?
Ms. Newton, I will share with you that Ms. Craver plans to have clerks, assistant clerks, with the movers at all times.
And that's only to be expected, but I'm talking about if, if, God forbid, something should happen or they get mislaid, or they, you know, there could be repercussions for moving the AOC property. And I think the least that they could do is give us a hold harmless.
Yes, I agree.
That would be part of the response. We disagree, but we also wanna hold harmless if you expect us to move your property.
Right, exactly.
Providing you a building, we disagree that we should have to pay to move it, but if we're going to, we wanna hold harmless.
Just to hold harmless, and we'll go ahead and get the contractor lined up, and let's go ahead and prove it.
And we need to go ahead and...
We've been whipping that contractor like a mule on a summer day. They've been sweating. So I don't want us to be the holdup in any way, shape, form, or fashion to the clerk moving back in the courthouse.
We don't have, so we don't have time to delay this decision.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Let's go. I make a motion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman...
And we'll make the motion to...
If I may, I also wanna just ask that we make sure that the full amount is included in the resolution as opposed to half the amount for the purchase, for purchase order purposes.
Is this a some certain with no contingency for overtime or expansion of contract? Is this a some certain contract, and does this contractor, this vendor, understand that?
The vendor does understand that. How, well, the vendor, when I spoke to the vendor about it, and this was the case with all of the moving contractors, they're not willing to give you a not-to-exceed price in case they run into something.
Here we go. We're gonna entertain a motion for the approval of an agreement and subsequent purchase order between Pender County and the contents team for moving the furniture into the courthouse and Biberstein Annex in the amount of thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents.
May I ask one question before the vote?
No, sir. The amount would be seventy-one thousand seven ninety-two and seventy-one cents for both. But will be reimbursed for the other, for the furniture portion by insurance.
Has Madam Clerk been made aware of the scope of this contract? And has she signed off that this scope is appropriate?
She hasn't signed off on anything, but we met with the contractors and walked through all of the facilities with her and discussed exactly what had to take place with the move.
She has a copy of this?
I have not given her a copy of this, no, ma'am.
Okay, she needed to prove and rubber stamp that what we are contracting for is sufficient for her purposes. Now, she should have been consulted about this.
I did tell her that I was bringing it before the board, and that our, I told her what our recommendation was to the board.
Well, she was engaged. She could, she had an opportunity to speak up. She hadn't been shy about speaking up about it, so...
But that's her, and this is us, and this is the county needing to make sure. And we're gonna do the vote, but, Mr. Van, I'm not happy that Madam Clerk didn't sign off on this contract. So I make a motion for approval.
In the amount of seventy-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Van.
Thank you.
All right. Any items for Rocky Point Water and Sewer District?
I would like to follow up and give the board an update on, if you'll recall, there's sixteen acres down St. Helena with the water booster pump station. That issue last minute was also tabled with a request for us to issue to check with the school system about whether or not that was a potential school site. The superintendent had several conversations with the superintendent about it, and he finally responded back to me that, no, that is not a potential school site. Second issue was to check to see...
Zoning.
Zoning. I asked our resident zoning experts, Travis, and actually referenced Sam when we initially talked about this several months ago when Sam was still with us. Travis reached out again to St. Helena, had conversations with him in-house. Travis reviewed St. Helena's comprehensive plan. That property is deemed low-density residential. Industrial uses are not allowed, allowed any form of drop yard. And it would take a, basically, an amendment to the comp plan or them going against the consistency statement to rezone and allow anything related to a warehouse facility for our use. So...
And that's coming from St. Helena?
That, yes. That was, Travis had the conversations with St. Helena. And again, they reiterated to Travis the same thing. They reiterated to me a couple different times is that would not be something they would support.
So there's really not a lot of uses for the county for that property?
St. Helena, it wants it to be agricultural or low-density residential, is basically the message we got.
So is this gonna be re-added to the next agenda, or do we wanna go ahead and deal with this today?
We have a buyer?
Yes.
And what was the price that he's willing to pay?
Hundred and one, he's gonna pay...
Six thousand an acre.
He's gonna pay a hundred and one thousand dollars, I think, total.
We surplus it.
Do we have...
It's wooded property.
Do we have deeded, will we have deeded access to our...
If you're familiar with the property, everything cleared, which is about three-quarters of an acre and has two driveways, we would retain both those driveways. Everything wooded, fifteen and a half plus acres would be part of the sale. And it would, it would have road frontage of its own, but it would not be our driveway.
So, so, so I had, I had a call from the person that bid on this property, and they bid a couple times. And they had a lot of frustration, and I had a large discussion with them about the process. And I explained to them that we were actively pursuing and purchasing land across the county for the schools. So the issue came up that there was not a personal issue with this, with this bid to purchase. It was, let's check one more time to make sure that the schools didn't need it or that it couldn't be rezoned for the benefit of the county to use. And having heard both of those, I would like to make a motion to amend the today's agenda to, so that we can consider this item and dispose of it.
And I don't mind doing that, but I wanna caution us on something. I know this has already been, it's already been tabled. It's already been on the books. We've already had the discussion on it. When it comes to selling a piece of property to someone, that's a very sensitive thing. I don't want anybody barking at us later. If you all wanna add it to the agenda, we can do that, or if you wanna just put it on the next agenda, we can do that too.
I think we'd better...
I would like to dispose of it today if possible.
I would too, but I think...
We've done everything statutorily. You told us to surplus it, bring it back. We did that. We did sealed bid. We only received one bid. We advertised.
I know, but we didn't put it on the agenda again.
Well, I see what you're saying.
And here, and here's my, my two cents. Chairman Brown and I were on this, we're on this board where stuff you should just get bought up willy-nilly during meetings. I mean, for a three-and-a-half million dollar agenda item was added because three commissioners wanted to add it to prove it one time. And so our policy has been, that's why we have now to have to have a unanimous vote to add it. And we will always try only to do it if it's time-sensitive.
And this is not...
In this case, I know this person would like to have this length, but I don't think it's made that much difference to...
It is, it is actually not. I asked the question, we're going to... I just, I'm trying to be fair to the individual that's been put off a couple times.
I know that, and what I should have asked you to do was put it on this agenda. I should have asked you to do that.
Well, I just received that information. Well, I just received that information. I didn't put it on the agenda. It was tabled.
We were looking for information.
I was still waiting on a little bit more information, which I got late Friday.
Put it on the next agenda.
Now see what you did.
I'm sorry.
No, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. We don't need the property. We have it. We need to sell it.
You give a good price.
We're a good price.
I think we've done our due diligence and we drug him on long enough, but let's just put it on the next agenda as a, as an action item, okay?
We had a motion and a second.
Then they didn't get it all, obviously it's not gonna get it fully voted.
Vote to a vote.
Well, it's not, it's not even the.
I'm gonna vote against it, so I can tell you that. Add it to today's agenda because of our history. I don't wanna go back there.
Right.
So. I withdraw my motion.
And I withdraw my second.
My vote against would be adding it to the agenda today. I got it. I got it. I got it. I got it. Okay.
All right. Move on?
Yep, we're gonna move on to, have you got any board of help? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry for that.
We're just putting you through your paces, Madam Clerk.
All right. Board of help, I don't see any issues or with Social Services Board. Do you have any business? Okay. Items from the county attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have several items to discuss in closed session. Item three, attorney-client. Item four, economic development. Item five, acquisition of real property. You got any personnel?
No, no, sir.
Hallelujah.
I'm wearing it up.
Meeting without personnel, oh, there is, may have involved me.
All right. County manager?
Only thing I have, I wanted to give us a plug. Last Thursday, I attended the CREW Awards, which I was not familiar with the CREW organization, but it is Commercial Real Estate Women. It's a, a fraternal organization made up primarily of commercial real estate brokers and agents in the Cape Fear area. But there are many more other folks that are involved in it. WBD's part of it. They have a banquet every year where they, an award ceremony where they recognize individuals as well as organizations and individual projects. We had two different projects. We were the only county that had a project in our area in southeastern North Carolina. And we had two projects that were recognized and nominated and selected as finalists. The Pender Commerce Park, which was Ram Project Number One, was nominated. And it was a finalist as well as Project Chatter, which was Poly Hose. Both of those were finalists. And it was good recognition for the county as well as our cooperation, collaborative efforts with WBD and Chris Ram and Poly Hose. So it's nice to be recognized, kinda like the Oscars. It's nice to be nominated even though you didn't win.
They didn't play music, started to play the music so you'd sit down, did they?
No, we, we didn't get the opportunity to stand up.
But there's more to come with, in relation to that too. But I went out to Commerce Park. It hasn't been out there in a couple of months. Looking good there. A lot more to come.
This is a good looking park, dude.
Make it bigger.
Yeah, we do, don't we?
Make it bigger.
Mr. Van, do you have anything?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Shipley?
Mr. Chairman, just to remind citizens of the, the master plan that we're working on for Parks and Recreation. We've already had two sessions last week. We have six additional meetings that are coming up in the future. Press releases have gone out. We've had about a hundred and ninety survey responses to this date. We would like to get a lot more than that. We have paper copies that are, we have an online version. We also have paper copies that are available here in this building, the Hampstead Annex, the Main Library in Bergall, the Hampstead Library Branch. And at all public meetings and by request, it'll be available until June thirtieth at midnight. So please, please have your voice heard.
And tomorrow evening's meeting is at the Hampstead Annex.
That's correct.
And then Cape Fear.
Cape Fear on Thursday.
On Thursday, yeah.
Good deal. Nice job setting that up and promoting, Sammy and you and everybody involved.
And I wasn't able to attend Penderly as planned because of a budget meeting. We're in budget season and so it was a typical budget meeting.
How did that one go?
It went late.
Penderly, how did that one go?
It was, it was about as well attended as the one we had last fall. We had a one-off, if you remember. So kind of what we expected, I guess, is what, how, how I'll answer that.
Okay.
Have anything?
I'd just like to say thank you to our state representative, Carson Smith, and to Senator Bill Raven. I have been asking for something to be done in the intercoastal waterway. And some dredging finally took place. This was in response to boater safety issues and to a large number of, of vessels being, running aground for extended periods of time and the danger that, you know, encourages for that to be able to continue to exist. So the dredging, pipe dredging, it was a side cast dredging of the intercoastal waterway has been completed. It was for such a length and such a width that, that sand was pumped to an island and then pumped to the beach. So it's gonna get utilized for beach renourishment, which is a win-win. And plus it removes a safety obstacle in the intercoastal waterway. That was not only for recreational personnel, it was also for, for barges and tugboats and other vessels that utilize that on a commercial and industry, industrial basis. Those were stuck there for long periods of time, upwards of, if they caught it at the right or the wrong moment in time, they could be there for four or five hours if they're on an outgoing tide and they run aground. And they have to sit all the way through low and they have to sit until it comes back to about mid, mid-high tide before they could get off. So I really appreciate the support we received out of our state representatives.
Went through there last Monday evening, as a matter of fact, and a big difference. It needed, I've witnessed it multiple times. Like you said, not just pleasure, but also commercial traffic. And especially in the spring and the fall, when you have the boats going back up north and the boats coming back down in the fall. There is a large number of large boats and it can get a little hairy through there, so it needs to be done.
That's all I have. Chairman, do you have anything?
No, the items were closed session. I'll do after.
Okay. The only thing I have was, I think next, next meeting is Hampstead, right?
That is correct.
Yes, sir.
And we don't have any budget meetings this week?
That is correct.
How many do we have next week?
We have two next week.
We're gonna pay the price for not having one this week, aren't we? Anyhow, I thought we did, but we'll entertain a motion for closed session.
Mr. Chairman, we go into closed session for item three, attorney-client. Item four, economic development. And item five, acquisition of property.
Okay. We need a second.
Thank you, Eric.
Second. All those in favor. We're in closed session.